If I could please call the Melville School District November 16th Board of Education Meeting to order, if we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, it's great to see so many of you here. I'm gonna do roll call, Tori Belkey.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jeff Wolman.
Here.
Scott Hugrich.
Here.
Grace Wright.
Here.
Jean Preto.
Here.
And I'm Peggy Hasler. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, moving on to recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. First is Hagaman with Dr. Durham.
Well, good evening, I am Jen Rich, the Assistant Principal at Hagaman and also Blades Elementary Schools, and I am proud to tell you about the Hagaman Student Council. It's made up of fourteen fifth grade students who had to fill out an application and be chosen to be a part of this group. These students showed their commitment to making the school a better place by even signing a contract stating they would fulfill their duties as student council members. As this is the first year for Hagaman to have a student council, this group has set the bar high for what they have to achieve here. They've already sold friendship grams to raise money for the school. They have plans to create a school-wide recycling initiative, create and implement a Super Bowl service project, and promote literacy for Read Across America Week. One student council member told me that she cares a lot about the earth, so she's excited that she gets to help the recycling initiative. Another student says that she cares so much about her school and wants to make it a better place for everyone, and she can do that on student council. We are so proud of these students for the hard work that they've already begun to put in accomplishing their goals, and we can't wait to see what they accomplish in their future.
Agenda items, so we will move on to student achievement. Hegaman Elementary, Dr. Durham.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Julie Durham and I'm the principal of Hegaman Elementary School. I will be presenting on Hegaman's progress and celebrations this school year. Earlier this evening, you were able to hear briefly about the week of our, about the work of our student council. This is just one of the many clubs that provide access and opportunity for our students. This year, our teachers are providing eight different club opportunities for a variety of grade levels. Our community enrichment program has also provided 11 additional opportunities for our students, with that list continuing to grow as the year progresses. These clubs and activities are giving our students experiences beyond the school day, where they can learn more about a preferred interest, explore something new, and build relationships with students outside of their daily classroom. Each month, students in classrooms are recognized and are celebrated in our Hegaman Huddle Assembly. We honor students that have gone above and beyond modeling our SOAR behavior expectations. SOAR stands for Safety, Ownership, Achievement, and Respect. In addition, we also celebrate classrooms that have accomplished their current academic goal in either ELA or math. This has allowed us to come together as a school community to celebrate one another and acknowledge their hard work. It's an exciting time to be a Hegaman Hawk. Our enrollment has continued to grow in recent years. Prior to redistricting, Hegaman had enrollment in the high 200s. Since redistricting, we have seen a steady increase of enrollment. This year, we have 433 students enrolled, kindergarten through 5th grade. Another growing area for us is our multilingual student enrollment. Currently, we have 84 multilingual students receiving ELD services. Our teachers and staff are working hard to meet the needs of all learners and providing best practices and strategies to aid in their success. We have 35 certified teachers at Hegaman this year. Of those 32, 17 of them have been at Hegaman for five or less years. We have a younger staff to the building, however, 23 of our teachers have been in education for 11-plus years. In the last few years, we have had the opportunity to hire many experienced teachers to join our Hegaman team that we're teaching in our districts, surrounding schools. We've even gained many teachers from surrounding districts, particularly Jefferson County districts. We are fortunate to have a dedicated, hard-working staff educating our students each day. In the area of reading, we have seen a steady increase in our Tier One scoring at or above grade level on the Spring Eye Ready Diagnostic. We are also seeing a decline in our Tier Three read students. At the end of last year, 70% of our students were at or above grade level in reading based on the Eye Ready Diagnostic. Students are provided daily Tier One reading instruction from their classroom teacher using a variety of methods of instruction. This year, all students are learning from a new phonics program called Sunday, which we are already seeing greater awareness and letter sound knowledge. We have an intervention block built into all grade level schedules daily that teachers use to support students that are not making expected growth and need additional supports. In addition, we also have a K-2 reading interventionist and reading specialists, meeting with our struggling readers in addition to what our classroom teachers are providing them. In the area of math, we have seen progress in our Tier One scoring at or above grade level on the Spring Eye Ready Diagnostic. At the end of last year, 67% of our students were at or above grade level in math based on that diagnostic. We are focusing our PLC work around math instruction this year and are working to support teachers in their learning to ensure we have the strongest math instruction possible. Teachers are also receiving monthly professional development in the area of math. This work is focused on math fluency and high-leverage instructional strategies. Lastly, we have a math interventionist that supports students in 3rd through 5th grade on skills they have not yet mastered. This year, Hegaman has started the work of professional learning communities to strengthen our core instruction. This summer, we were fortunate to have 10 of us attend the summer PLC training here at Melville High School. We had a teacher from every grade level attend along with support staff. This team became our guiding coalition that is leading this work for our entire school. We are extremely proud of their work. My hope is to take another group of teachers this upcoming summer to continue to build capacity within our school. Teams meet weekly in PLC meetings to break down learning standards, plan instruction, create assessments together, analyze assessments, and work to create a plan for all students. The four questions that guide our work are: What do we want our students to know? How will we know that they learned it? What will we do when, for the students that don't get it? And what will we do for the students who've already got it? Our teams are engaging in meaningful conversation to support student learning. They should be extremely proud of the amount of work they have already done in such a short time. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to share a bit about the work of our educators and students. We are proud of the progress we have made and are excited about our future goals. We also appreciate all that you do to support Hegaman and our district.
Okay, it's really wonderful to see all the great things happening at Hegaman. Just so the public knows, there are member questions and responses on e-boards if anybody would like to take a look at those that were asked prior to the meeting. Next up is Troutline Elementary, Dr. Henderson.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Henderson. I am the principal at Troutline Elementary, and I will be presenting both the progress and celebrations of our school this evening. There we go. So, we are most proud at Troutline of the diversity among us and our building. We currently have 72 multilingual learners, and it increases almost every week. We have 23 countries represented and 24 languages spoken. We embrace and celebrate the diversity among us. We have a group of teachers that have a cultural awareness group so that we can embed practices within our daily teaching throughout the building. We're also very proud of just the learning and the community connection beyond the classroom. This year, our teachers have offered 17 clubs. Our PTO called Partners in Education PIE. They sponsor 16 different events between the summer and school year. And in addition to that, we have a number of events that are hosted by our own teachers, myself during the summer. We really focus on just bringing everyone together and building a culture and a community where everyone feels as if they belong. Our demographics this year, we have 40% of our families and students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. That has allowed us to become a Title I building this year, meaning that we are receiving extra funding to support supplemental reading. We have 19% of our students, again, that are multilingual learners. 15% receiving special education, which is decreasing from my years earlier in at Troutline. We currently have 47 new students, just submitting this last week. I mean, it changes like every other day. So, I was like, I think it's 47. And up to date, we have withdrawn 46 students this school year, beginning from the summer. Our enrollment has been pretty steady over the last handful of years. What is significant to me is the number of students that we actually service within a year when you consider the additions and you consider the withdrawals. So, there are years where we have serviced, you know, 70 additional students, 80 additional students. I believe in 2021 and 22, it was 101 additional students than our enrollment showed. This year, we're hovering right around 60, and it's November. So, I imagine that number will continue to increase. We have, our, our class sizes are pretty lovely, to be quite honest. You can see that our 3rd grade has the lowest right there, and we are proud, proud, proud to have early childhood as part of Troutline. We have a very experienced staff at Troutline. We have 30 staff members who have been in the building for 11 years or more, and you can see that about 2/3 of the staff have, a little over 2/3, have higher degree, masters or higher. So, we have some real quality teachers that are providing instruction. Our Eye Ready data continues to show improvement over the years. You can see the trajectory. Last year, I believe that number says 65% of our students ended in Tier One in the area of reading. And you can see also, from the board questions that you asked prior to the meeting, that we do a lot of work with intentional teaching to make gains and bring students from the beginning of the year to the end of the year to get them caught up and enclose those gaps. And then in the area of math, you notice the same trajectory. Again, we're working really hard to ensure that we're taking students from where they are, and we are progressing them forward at least a year. I'm really excited to share that last year, we had a number of students that had surpassed a year's worth of growth and even attained stretch growth for the year in both reading and math. What we're most excited about is just the students and the staff and the learning that's happening among all of us. As teachers, we believe that our job is to meet each student where they are, regardless of what that portrait looks like. We, as adult learners, take responsibility for doing that. It, our PLC work that Dr. Durham talked about has been most impactful this year. We also took a team of eight teachers this summer, who jumped right on board, came right back to their teams, and I didn't even have to like sell it. They were like, this is what we need to do. So, we as well are unpacking standards. We're creating common formative assessments within grade levels. One of the things that I see that we're most doing is starting to align our expectations of what does a three look like, or if we're expecting kids to add fluently within 20, what does fluently mean? And, and so how do we go about monitoring that progress? We also are really putting a lot of emphasis into attendance. We want our students to be at school so they have access to high-quality learning every single day. That's an area of improvement that we've been working towards. I'm grateful to our school secretary and counselor, who took initiative to put together a hero program here every day, ready to learn on time. And they are just amazing taking that on. And then, as I've spoken about over the last couple of years, we've been very committed to ensuring that all students have access to Tier One instruction. We have realized that when we don't do that, we create unintentional gaps in students' learning. So, Dr. Durham talked about the Sunday instruction. We have a lot at a time that's called Protected Time every single day. Every student, no matter if you're receiving EL, reading, special education, you are present for your Sunday time. Even I don't pull kids during Sunday, no matter how big it is. And we too are seeing great gains and transfer through reading and writing. We also have a time in our day that, through our PLC work, it's called Intervention Time. Every grade level has a 30-minute block of time every day. All grades, with the exception of first grade, are focused in the area of math. Kindergarten will soon be shifting to ELA along with first grade, really getting that early intervention and those early literacy development skills. And in that time, teachers are working together collectively. They are sharing students. They are grouping students not by class but by skills and need, and they are addressing those needs to close gaps and move on to the next level. So, tonight, I thank you for the opportunity to stand in front of you, to speak on behalf of Troutline, and the pride that I share and we all share to be there. I also want to thank you as board members for your service to our community. It is recognized, it is appreciated, and it is having a very positive influence. Thank you for your time this evening.
Next is audit, Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and this presentation will cover the annual financial audit. Daniel Jones and Associates are, the audit firm, is the audit firm that conducts our audit every year. And here tonight to present the audit report findings, or the results, is Desi Kirchhoff.
Good evening, everybody. Just reintroduce myself. My name is Desi Kirchhoff. I'm the lead auditor here at Melville School District. I'm here with good news tonight. So, I, just to begin, I would like to thank you guys for allowing Daniel Jones and Associates to perform the district's audit. The district's staff are always a pleasure to work with, and we appreciate the assistance and hard work provided by Marshall and Carey throughout the audit process. So, throughout the audit, we issue a few opinions. The first opinion is on the district's financial statements, in which we issued an unmodified opinion. This means the audit was a clean audit. That is the best opinion that a district can receive and that we can issue. The second opinion we issued is in regards to the district's compliance with the requirements of Missouri's laws and regulations regarding budgetary and disbursement procedures, accurate disclosure by the district's records of attendance and average daily transportation, and other requirements as listed on the schedule of selected statistics. We found the district to be in compliance with state requirements relating to attendance, transportation, and these budgetary procedures. Finally, because the district expensed more than $750,000 of federal awards, they were subject to a single audit. We issued an unmodified opinion for compliance with these federal awards, and again, that is the highest opinion that a district can receive. There are no financial statement findings and no federal award findings to report. You should have also received a copy of the management letter along with the audit report. The management letter just consists of some standard verbiage that we are required to communicate to you. So, in closing, I would like to congratulate the school district on having an excellent audit and to thank the board for giving Daniel Jones and Associates this opportunity. I'm open to any questions.
Do they have any? Nothing? You're, so on e-boards, everything you presented is thorough and complete, so I don't, other than I wasn't expecting, whenever I heard of Desi Kirchhoff, I thought of the other Desi Kirchhoff. I'm like, wait, how are you Desi Kirchhoff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm his son.
Oh, well, nice to meet you.
Oklahoma High School alumni, father in the Melville School District Hall of Fame.
And your aunt, right?
There you go, Hall of Famer. We got another one in the pipeline, so there you go.
It's actually funny, because my dad was superintendent of a school district, my mom was an auditor, and now I'm an auditor of a school district, so.
Well, nice to meet you, and thank you very much, and it's very great to hear that we had a clean and perfect audit, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. I believe we do need to approve the audit, is that correct? If I could please get a motion to approve the audit report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Okay, Budget Amendment, Marshall Crutcher.
All right, now this presentation will cover the Budget Amendment for November. This gives us an update to the adopted budget that we started off with in, in July. So, if you look at the handout that I just gave you, on the first page, over on the right side, you'll see the net gain-loss of 63, negative $63,000. That is, after all the adjustments, that would be the operating net loss that we would now have, which is basically break even, because you're talking about a revenue budget of $164 million. So, $63,000 net operating loss is virtually zero. Our adopted budget was a $323,000 operating gain, and that's just a, you know, a very small change in the overall net operating loss. So, that is based on all the adjustments that we'll talk about shortly on the revenue-expense side, and it's also based on making a $1.1 million transfer from the general fund to the capital HVAC fund in addition to what was initially budgeted. That transfer will not be approved today, but it's just, it's, it's an opportunity later on in the year as we assess things to, to present that and have that approved by the board later in the year if we don't have any other unforeseen activities. So, when you look at where those transfers show up on this document, you look over on the left, under the General Fund 110 column, I've circled the $2,850,000 yellow highlighted number under transfers. That $2,850,000 is made up of the Prop R transfer of $1,750,000 that we do every year, and then potentially later on in the year, if things continue as we think they will, we'll propose a $1.1 million transfer from the general fund to the capital fund into that HVAC bucket to help with that $30 million chunk. So, without that transfer, back to the net operating loss of $63,000, without that transfer, we would have just a little bit over a $1 million net operating gain. So, where that leaves us down at the bottom on the cash reserve percentage is, if we make that transfer later on the year, the projected cash reserve is 33.4%. So, if all of that holds true and we continue down that path, the HVAC capital fund bucket, instead of having $10 million transferred into that bucket or put into that bucket for this year, we would have $11.1 million, and it really helps with that $30 million chunk. So, tonight, what we'll be asking for is the approval just on the revenue items and the expense items, but not on that transfer. That'll be later on in the year. So, if we go to the next page, you'll see all the detailed revenue adjustments, and they're really summarized in the lower right-hand box on the summary of key adjustments. And you'll see the, the largest items are the taxes that, that reduced from the original adopted budget in June, because the assessed values went down in July and then further on down in September, and we talked about that at the tax rate hearing. And then the other bigger item is the earnings on investments, because we conservatively budgeted interest rates in the spring, and the interest rates have held, held up and held high. So, that's translated into a lot of additional earnings over what the adopted budget was. And then the other items are just other smaller gains, but, but basically all gains. So, that gives us an overall adjusted budget of $164 million. Then we go to the next page on the expense items, and those are all detailed out. But if we go back to the summary of the key adjustments, you'll see the larger items, capital adjustments. Those are really just the timing of Prop S adjustments, and those can swing wildly. But in essence, those are all part of the Prop S projects that were approved two or three years ago. And then, the salary, that's a decrease of expense by $1,186,000. Most of that is because of the end-of-year actual-to-forecast variances. So, you're in the spring, you forecast what you think you're going to end up with at the end of the year, and then the actual number is less. So, that sort of resets your starting point for this fiscal year. So, that's a nice positive adjustment. And then the $216,000 for health insurance, we've talked about that at the September Health Insurance Agenda Item on rates increasing 6% instead of what was initially budgeted 2%. So, that's why we have the $216,000 increase there. And then, just other smaller adjustments that ultimately end up giving us an expense, an adjusted budget of $176,766,000. So, basically, what we're asking is just approval then of these revenue and expense adjustments. Are there any questions?
So, again, there are many questions on e-boards that were asked in advance of the meeting with thorough answers, if anybody would like to see what was asked. So, thank you. If I could please get a motion to approve the Budget Amendment as presented.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Prop S update, Steve Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Steve Wendell. I'm the school district's construction manager, and I'll be presenting Prop S update tonight. So, we are putting two more jobs on the completed list. Beer Bound Phase One, the security entrance, and the Melville High School ball fields. Beer Bound Phase One, as of last month, the, really the big item that we were focused on was getting the boiler inspected, and that has been completed, and the boiler is up and running. The contractor also essentially finished their punch list. They're very close. They've got a few items left, but for all intents and purposes, Phase One is complete. Phase Two, in the rear of the school, that's for the library, music, and art room. You know, we're very close to the beginning of the project. We've been working on the footings over the last month. We're about halfway done or a little bit more than halfway done. And we've started some of the rough-in of some of the utilities. You can see the plumbing rough-in on the right-hand picture there. And very soon, we'll be starting on foundation walls after we're done with the footings, and then installing the water detention system. Melville High School Ball Fields is the one I've said is complete. We're, actually tomorrow is the last day we're finishing the fencing, the perimeter fencing up, and that'll close that job out. Point Elementary, been making good progress there. The rough-ins for electrical and plumbing are finished, the framing and the drywall's finished, and I think they've even started some painting this week there. So, making good, good progress, and will be complete with the teachers' rooms and the restrooms by January and March for the office. At Melville High School, also good progress. The masonry, you can see the masonry cutouts for the security vestibule windows in the right-hand photo. The masonry work is done, the drywall, et cetera, is done, and we are on track for finishing up about a month from now for Melville High School. About the same status at John Carey Early Childhood. Their framing is complete, drywall is complete, and also on track for about a month from now to be complete with the, the job. Overall Prop S scheduling, we did do a little change in the last month. We were going to build, bid Berkeley, Beasley, and Fordor next, and Woolwin and Oakville middle in a month later. We've reversed those two, switched those two. We're still going to bid one in November and one in December. We're just switching the sequence a little bit, and that's just due to the design progress. And then all of the other dates are the same for Mosaic and Washington and Troutline, wrapping up the major Prop S work. And the last slide is the finances. I guess the only noteworthy thing is, we are now at, we just passed in the last month, half of the money is now spent. So, it just shows we're a significant way through Prop S. We've still got a significant amount to go, but it's a nice milestone to, to pass. If there's any questions, I'll pause.
I've just got one quick one. Can you go back to the bid slide for one quick second?
Yeah.
So, Troutline is going to be our last one. That's going to bid out with May, April, May, and start construction in summer. When do you think that this will actually be done, done? By summer 2025? By summer 2025?
Well, I don't have a good duration schedule on some of those last ones because we're still early in design, but it is definitely going to go into 2025.
But at least theoretically, summer 2025 is probably about when this is all going to get done.
Yeah, plus or minus, yeah.
Okay, that was all.
Very good. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Communication Report, Jessica Papillo.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jessica Papillo, Director of Communications, and I'm presenting the annual communications report and the 2024-2025 communications plan for your approval. So a little bit about the communications department, we have a team of three professional communicators, and we also have the community education director and the district receptionist under our umbrella. And I know you've probably heard me say this time and time again, we are a small but mighty team, very passionate about communicating and advocating for the school district. And our work is guided by a comprehensive communications plan that's reviewed by the communications committee. We take their feedback, incorporate it into the plan before bringing it to you for approval. We also keep that committee apprised of our progress throughout the school year and the duration of that plan. I can't say thank you enough for that group for volunteering their time to assist us. So some highlights of our 2022-2023 work, we supported the efforts related to Proposition E with an informational campaign that wasn't quite on the schedule last year as soon as we thought it might be, but we jumped into that work in earnest on the informational side. We also rolled out My Melville Story to help recruit teaching staff, support staff, by telling the stories of our current employees. In addition, we rolled out Melville Mentions to help with the recognition piece and to ensure our staff felt seen and to allow our community to appreciate staff members in sort of an informal and really fun, meaningful way. We also did quite a bit of planning around the standard response protocol, that's our emergency communications protocol around five things that we can do in an emergency. You've probably heard hold, secure, lockdown, shelter, and evacuate, and that launched the school year, but a lot of the planning was done last school year. And then continued support for Parent Square. This last school year, we really encouraged our teachers to use that as their primary communication tool for classroom-to-home communications. Prior to that, we were working on that school home and district home communications. So when we look at our communications plan in the past, it's divided out the previous plan into five goals. The first one is developing and maintaining positive relationships with all stakeholders, and that's where we identify our key messaging. In the past, it was student engagement, access to opportunities, student celebrations, staff expertise, stewardship of resources, safety improvements, and especially public health the past few years. And then we had a focus on providing opportunities for those without students in our schools to engage with the school district. So this picture here is one of our 60-plus luncheons that have been very successful. We've had a few neighboring school districts reach out to us for their thoughts and assistance from us to develop a program like this, so that's really cool. When we look at our performance indicators, things were a little bit down on this goal over the past two years. There's a variety of reasons for that. It was a rough year in public education with COVID, with a school shooting in our region, and with emergency communications. So we're responding to that with future communication plans that we'll outline in just a minute. But we saw engagement down a little bit with parent surveys, people were very engaged with COVID-related surveys. Now we're seeing that wane with some more run-of-the-mill types of surveys, so we're working on reminding parents more and trying to bump up that engagement. COVID impacted our 60-plus events, but we are on the rise. This year, we're going to try a new 60-plus event, inviting them in to watch a performance here at Naughtleman, matinee performance. So I'm hoping we can reach more people and bring more people into the schools. Our second goal is refining and reviewing the use of our digital communications tools, really to expand our reach on our email message, our email newsletters, and also our social media. We hit all of our performance indicators with the exception of Instagram, but we've seen a lot of growth on LinkedIn. There's a lot of efforts last year on recruiting and retaining staff, so those metrics reflect that. Instagram, I think a lot of users of that platform have sort of switched to TikTok. That's a platform we are monitoring, we're talking with the communications committee about at this point. We're not wanting to jump into that, but know that it's something that we look at from time to time. Goal Three was where we spent a lot of time last year, establishing effective employee communications programs, focusing on that sense of belonging and well-being amongst our staff. We worked to get at least one monthly employee newsletter out last year and focused on employee recognition and supporting human resources with recruitment through My Melville Story, My Melville Mentions, and other activities. So I was a little bit blown away by this metric here on the staff climate survey jumping from spring 2021, where staff, 76%, a little bit over that, of staff felt valued, and 81% enjoyed coming to work. From our fall data, 84% of staff are feeling valued, 89% are enjoying coming to work. That's huge, so we're hoping to build on that going into the future. Again, our emergency communications is the focus of Goal Four, and we want to be coordinated, we want to have alignment between internal and external communications and all be on the same page operationally and on the communications front. Part of that was participating in training, which led to our movement towards the standard response protocol, because we did see a drop in our performance perception from parents. In 2020, they rated us 92%, said we were very good or good, and that took a little bit of a decline to 86.85, and that's really when the communications committee started looking at standard response protocol. So I'm hoping that gets better in the future. And then Goal Five was really a stretch goal for us, being known as a destination school district specifically chosen by parents to educate their children. And we did get reviews off the ground, seeking out family recruitment opportunities specifically around early childhood, chances teachers, dial screenings, those sorts of things. We were supporting them in that work. And then we're establishing some baseline performance indicators because we didn't really measure how likely parents were to recommend Melville School District to friends. So looking forward to 2425, we're returning back to four goals. That fifth goal was a little bit probably beyond what we could accomplish with the team our size. We have switched our objectives around to be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, time-bound, and evaluated. That is best practice in communications. Part of the training I went through to get my accreditation in public relations was around this, so thank you for investing in me in that, and this next plan reflects that style of communications plan. Our key messaging, we're bringing in heavy focus on academic achievement. You'll probably see that in our social media posts already, where we're talking specifically about what's happening in that classroom, what standard kids are working on, and how that relates back to the curriculum. And then we're continuing to focus on relationship building with community members who don't have kids coming in and out of our building every day. Building on our internal communication is looking at operational internal communication and starting to measure that. Do I feel like I have the information I need to do my job? So we'll be looking at those measurements going forward and trying to boost those, and then continuing to roll out and reinforce the standard response protocol, which is in play right now. That's my report for the evening.
Thank you.
I just have one comment as a mother in the district and have friends with kids in the district. I've noticed a big difference in the communication and confusion by other parents of what's happening this year, so I really appreciate the new protocols you rolled out.
Thank you.
I know, you know, we all appreciate you very much, but I did want to tell you, Jean and Jeff presented about advocacy at the MSBA conference, but Tori, Peggy, and I had another presentation, and several slides were dedicated to how valuable our communications team were, and it was nice to be able to include visual aids that would have not been possible without yours and Hunter's work, so we would just want to say we bragged about you to every other school district in the state of Missouri, and we are so happy that you are with our district.
And we also make sure to tell them the value of having a communications, at least a person in a communications department, and obviously, smaller districts are going to have a financial reach to try and do that, but mid-sized districts, we bring it up in conversation sometimes because they, obviously, we're exchanging about, hey, we know about your district and our district, and we always try to stress the value of having a communications department, and obviously, you've shown the value in that, so thank you and everybody and your team.
When I had to laugh that you said other districts are inquiring about the 60-plus club, because that was, our presentation got derailed by people asking about the 60-plus club, to the point that Patrick had to say, you're making us run behind, so if we could please answer these at the end, that would be better. So.
They were like, you bring them into your school?
Yeah, and then Jean got involved answering, but it was good, so. And to me, that was part of even more communication, communicating to our other state school board members both about advocacy and the success of Melville School District, so that was good, and again, that success is, you get a lot of credit for that, and as does everyone else, but.
No, thank you.
We do still need to approve this.
Yes, thank you.
So if I could please get a motion to approve the comprehensive communications plan for 2425 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Panorama Report, Dr. Adam Smith.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Adam Smith, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and I will be presenting the Panorama Data Report Employee Results this evening. So our purpose, when we look at our mission, is really building that culture of improvement for staff and students, and we are engaging in cycles of feedback with our employee stakeholders. So right now, and starting last month, we took the survey mid-October, so the district leadership team has done some reviewing of the data, as well as supervision of school assistant superintendents have worked with their building principals they supervise to talk about the data specific to their buildings. Principals are working on sharing that with their staff, and then tonight, I'm on behalf of the leadership team, sharing with the Board of Education. So when we look at these data results, this is a survey that we have been giving an opportunity for teachers to give feedback on since 2018. So fall of 2018, we started using this particular competency set to survey our teachers. The data is only inclusive of Melville-certified teachers because it's directly linked to the student information system roster, so right now, in this particular survey, it's only Melville-certified teachers. And when we look at that national comparison, which is that, oh, this doesn't work, I was going to arrow it, but that third column, there's greens and oranges, that really is kind of that early morning system to where it's for the district to really look at identifying areas to possibly celebrate, as well as areas that we might want to put some action steps to processively improve in the future. So that's really what the purpose of that is. And that far-right column shows over time, so this would be in comparison to last winter's survey that we took in February, it shows the increase or decrease on that particular competency and topic that the results are in the most recent October file set. So we also have an opportunity for teachers to give some free responses, and so the particular one that I chose here is what school or district leaders do to better support your well-being. So it really just takes, the word wall is just the hits that are out most often typed that teachers are typing in the free response. So obviously, time is something that was brought up, people having a lot on their plates, task, data, expectations, things of that, meetings, those are some things that kind of rose to the top when you look at that word wall on that particular October dataset. When we also look at what are some of the most positive aspects of working at your school, people suggested the colleagues, staff, students, community, the admin, the autonomy that they have, their team, the diversity, and our families and support. So there's also really a lot of good pieces that come up in those free responses in that particular survey. This particular slide is representative of a brand-new survey. So we used the Panorama platform to actually put in, that is the tool to which we put the survey out for teachers to submit. So this is baseline data. The first time that these questions and these topics have ever been surveyed for our staff has been October of '23. This survey is considerably shorter. The survey previously for a teacher, it says it takes about 35 minutes, depending on how thorough or how long people take to interpret the questions, I think it could take longer. So that old survey that we've been doing since '18 takes about 35 minutes. This particular survey takes about eight to 10 minutes to complete, so it's much shorter. We actually have a pretty high response rate, we had over 628 employees respond to this. This one, this particular October, we deployed it via Parent Square, so there was some delineation that was a little different, and this one also includes all Melville employees as well as Melville SSD stakeholders, so since we sent it through Parent Square, everyone that has an email address had the opportunity to respond. So that gives this one a little bit different opportunity for, to really get full feedback from our former climate and for our staff. This also includes all of the MSIP-required climate and culture questions that school districts are required to provide to their staff one time a year. We're going to do it two times a year because we're also going to do this in February. So when we look at the free responses this year on this one, this is, one that we chose is what do you feel is going well in your building or department, since it does encapsulate everyone. So department really rose to the top, collaboration, PLCs, the building, support, kids, students, learning, so there's a lot of good pieces that people were consistently saying were things that were going well in our, in their school building or their department they work in. Also, we asked the flip side of that, what are some things that might need improvement in your building or department? So plan time was one that rose to the top, classes, PLCs, building expectations, minutes, accountability, so kind of a gamut of things, but those are just some of the big topics that when people were expressing how they were feeling in that moment in time, that kind of came up as far as considerations. When we look at this, we also ask people on this survey to kind of delineate, you know, where are you? Like, is this your first school district? If it isn't your first school district, how long have you worked in a school district? Also, is it, how many years have you worked in your particular school or department? So on the left side of the screen, it shows you all the, on the very top, it shows you the competencies, it gives you the overall positive response rates of all people who took the survey. But if you look, our employees, now granted, it's 11 and then 80 respectively, but it's still, our people who've been here less than a year really think things are going well, because when they're like, on the first one for climate, it's plus 10, that meant that people that are less than a year in our system were reporting a 91% climate positive rate, where the district average is 81%. So you can kind of see based on the oranges or the pluses or negatives, it shows you kind of how that group, based on those competencies, responded to the overall district average. So when I look at it, in the first part about how many years have you worked or taught in a school system, so 17% of the folks that took this survey are in the years, less than a year, up to five years, and then 83% of the folks that took the survey are in that six to 10 or 11-plus year range. On the right side, when we look at how many years have you worked or taught in the department that you're currently or a school that you're working in, 54% of the respondents were less than a year, up to their fifth year at their school or department, and then 55% were six to 11-plus years on this particular survey. We also had it break down, because we want people to be honest, we want to get good feedback, we also want to kind of know, what's your big area that you work in? And so we had Melville Classified, we had Melville Certified, it got cut off, so I apologize for that, but it's Melville Classified or Certified Administrator is the third row, then we have Special School District Certified, and then the confidentially protected, you had to have 10 folks in a group in order for it to drill out the data into a topic, so it does keep that anonymity for people to be able to really give their feedback. That may be inclusive of maybe a Special School District Coordinator, it could be some related service folks, because we also, to our school psychologists, our social workers, our OTs, our PTs that work for Special School District supporting students in Melville, so that group kind of conglomerates people who didn't have around 10 people in their group. So in terms of that, that kind of lays out and breaks down the groupings of who took it this particular October. So moving forward, we are wanting to continue the new district climate and culture survey. We had a very, you know, 600 We had a very, you know, six hundred and fifty-eight plus employees took that survey. It's inclusive of our Special School District staff that work in Melville, supporting Melville's teachers, students, and administration. So we want to continue that survey. It's also eight minutes. I think we're going to have a better response rate when people realize it takes them eight to ten minutes to complete it. It's something that's doable. We're wanting to sunset the staff well-being and the teacher SCL support climate surveys just because those are a little more extensive, take a lot more time. I think we'll get the survey, the feedback we need from the new twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four district climate and culture survey. We're also looking at that fall feedback, time, the things that are on folks' plates, really surfaces areas that school and district leaders can really do to better support our employees. So we're kind of looking at next semester, working on creating a teacher workload committee to kind of look through those pieces and kind of see what surfaces at the top and see what we need to talk about and consider for the district. And then ongoing, Dr. Pike has done a fantastic job of coordinating and facilitating our retention and recruitment committee. I think all of this data really flows into those conversations very well and some of those actions that that team's leading to make recommendations for. So we want to continue that work because I think it goes hand in hand, and it makes a lot of sense, and it'll be a better product in the end to support all of our employees. So that's really what I have tonight for the first time that we've shared this data with the board, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you have one quick question?
Sure.
How long does Panorama keep the data that we've accumulated? Like, how far back can we go if we obviously continue with the current survey?
We can go back from the first time that we've taken it. So as long as we maintain our relationship, the data is always ours.
So the data is constantly available as long as we're continuing our relationship with Panorama?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Again, there are many questions on eboards that were asked prior to the meeting, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next is ESER and At Home Report. I assume it's Dr. Hogg?
It is, thank you. And if you've noticed, we've been working on a standard greeting and opening to our presentation, so if I don't do it, that'd be a bit hypocritical. So, "Good evening, Board of Education. My name's Jeff Hogg. I'm the superintendent of schools, and this evening I'm going to provide an update on the ESER and At Home Report." So we're going to have two big decisions coming up. One is on the Interventionists, our thirty-four ESER Interventionists that will sunset at the end of this year when that funding sunsets. And then the other is At Home Academy, which is the At Home, it's fully synchronous, it's an option for students to learn in that virtual setting. It was brought up that after two years, we'd review that financially. So we're going to bring those to the board on December seventh. What we're looking at, and I wanted to kind of provide a timeline, is that, and this is just the Interventionist timeline. So this program, again, like I said, the funding runs out this summer. So what we've been doing, and we know that both the Interventionists and the At Home programs, they're our teachers and they've done some great things for students. So we want to give them every chance and every opportunity for us to think this through. So we've started talking about these two things over the summer already. We've talked to, in this case, with the Interventionists. We had principals submit several folders of data through Google. We reviewed that. We actually had fifteen-minute Zoom meetings with each principal to talk about how the Interventionists were used at that point. On the twentieth, there'll be two meetings, one at eight and one at three for the Interventionists to have a chance to ask questions, provide some feedback. We'll give them a little bit of the timeline. And then we will bring to the board on December seventh, a plan to receive some feedback, and then we'll bring that to the board to vote on December fourteenth for the Interventionists. But again, we know this is a big, this is, it's thirty-four people, and we want to make sure that we have heard all sides and thought all sides through. Kind of At Home, kind of the same thing. We started this discussion in the summer. We've met with Dr. Matthews, Dr. Bressler, Marshall, Brian Smith, to kind of discuss where we are, what we're looking at, and this is really going to be a financial decision when we look at that. Is the district spending more money than that program is driving in revenue? And we'll take a look at that. We'll take a look at the pluses, the minuses, and everything else. But again, we've reviewed this as a cabinet, and we're going to give the At Home Academy teachers, we talked to, Dr. Matthews, about the best time, and she said there's a time from eleven to eleven-thirty every day. So we're going to open that up for them on that Monday as well, have a half hour where we talk timeline, questions, feedback from that staff. Because, you know, they are, they're doing really good things, but we're going to have to make some financial decisions coming up on those two. So kind of a timeline here. December seventh, we're going to have another board meeting. Susan's reached out. We need to do that to follow policy FC. We have several options, we have some plans. We'll bring a final plan probably that evening, but if we are going to, and nothing is set yet, but if we are going to close that At Home program, policy says we have to have a hearing. So we'll set that up, and what that'll look like is we'll have a section of time for anybody to comment publicly on that. It'll be like a tax rate hearing or any other hearing that we have. We'll listen, we'll take that into consideration, we'll present our plans, and then after that, we'll go back, we'll tweak them a little bit, and then we'll bring them to you on the fourteenth for a vote. Whatever we do on the fourteenth, we have meetings set up already on the fifteenth so that we can communicate to both staffs, the Interventionists, and At Home teachers with whatever decision is made. And then, so that's kind of the timeline moving forward. Are there any questions? Yes, tonight was just a timeline of what we're looking at. The seventh will be our plan with all the finances, enrollment, students, and there are a couple of things that we have to meet in policy FC, so we're going to bring that data to you guys as well that night.
I have one small question. Is the first time that parents and the community comment on it on the fourteenth? Is that?
That would be on the seventh.
The seventh?
Yep.
Okay.
So they'll have that option before the board votes so that we can hear that feedback and then make some changes as necessary. But we wanted to make sure we had really a good handle on it before we brought it publicly so that we could provide the best presentation to you guys as well as get that input. Overly simplistic question, but I suppose that basically what we're getting at is, beginning next school year, we can't, our current financial situation says we can't afford all Interventionists and At Home at the same time. Is that what this is coming down to? So that's what we're looking at. We're looking at a couple of different plans, and we'll have to make some decisions based on money. We haven't looked at, we don't have a set plan yet, so I don't want to get too far into that of, we need to make a decision based on that. But we'll need to look at, the funding for the Interventionist runs out this summer, so that'd be anywhere between two-point-eight to three million dollars if we were to keep all thirty-four. And then At Home is roughly about one-point-five million in expenditures, and the revenues right now aren't matching that. So we're going to bring two presentations, that one of Interventionist, one of At Home, to show what it is and what our, what we propose. Okay?
And then just to also be clear, we have asked for Interventionist data for two years. We have gotten some, like, as time has gone on, but this is like, obviously, a presentation focused on the cumulative effects of what we've gotten from Interventionists during the time of ESER, which was funding given to us by the federal government during COVID. And we chose, you could spend it on a variety of things. It could have been spent on HVAC, the state had to approve it, the state received the money, then we would get reimbursed on that. But we have received data on Interventionists prior to this meeting. I just wanted to make that clear, in that we chose to spend a large majority of our money on learning recovery, which meant Interventionist.
And am I correct in assuming that Melville At Home is not being well participated in? Am I correct in that the numbers are not good?
Well, we just, we want to bring those enrollment numbers to you. They change and they vary by month depending on enrollment. So we want to look at it historically so that you can see what they are. Enrollment's down from where it was probably, well, two years ago, three years ago at the end of the pandemic. Great program served a lot of our needs, but those numbers have dropped. And so we want to show you that versus the staffing that we have.
And is this part of the MOVAP, is that what it's called? The Missouri? Help me out here.
The MOCAP.
The Missouri? The acronym escapes me right now, but...
It is the, it's the online school.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
So the hearing on December seventh is specifically only for At Home, not the Interventionists?
Correct.
Okay. And what kind of communication are we going to be giving the public in advance to advise of the hearing? So that the public has plenty of time to understand and respond should they choose to come speak?
And so that is going to be disseminated really through our meetings on Monday. That is going to be made through to the teachers from At Home, and then they'll have that understanding, we can have them pass that along to their students, we can then go ahead and send something out to our students enrolled in that program. So they will know ahead of time. That, and that's, that's one of the reasons we wanted to do this, so that we could be very transparent throughout the whole thing. Again, we've talked about it being our students and our staff, and we just don't want to push anything through, show up on the fourteenth and say, here's our plan. So we'll communicate that out so that they are well aware.
Great. Anybody else?
With the reports that you're presenting, will they have academic data specifically, like, how are the At Home students doing?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You're good.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. So if I could, does anybody need to pull any action items?
No.
So if I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through H?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I know this is me, I need to pull up the, oh, sorry.
No, we don't have closed session. Okay, next is Communications. Open period for patron comments on non-agenda items. We have one signed up, Jennifer Rayborn. Oh, I'm like, where'd she go? Thought you were going to jump out and surprise us. Okay, so you know the rules, I think, but I'm going to repeat them. You have three minutes, and as you know, the board is accountable to the state for protecting the legal rights of the schools, employees, students, parents, and others. Discussion of individuals or specific situations will not be allowed. The board will strictly enforce these rules, and you will be interrupted if you discuss matters that might violate board rules or policy. So thank you.
All right. I'm going to be all over the place because I've been writing things down for a while. With the increase in popularity of academy and a waitlist for sixth graders at Berkeley, I think it's time to have a conversation about MOA, as I named it, Melville Local Academy. And it only makes sense for your customers. Currently, they are not able to reach their full potential with limited encore options in academy. For instance, stretch is an elective, so if they were to do that, then they would have to choose between a foreign language band or choir. And if you heard them perform last Friday, you know how good they are. When my sophomore was in eighth grade, he was an academy kid and took Spanish in band. He is now in Spanish III and can't wait to take the biliteracy test. He also got a gold medal at state for playing the tuba with his ensemble. My son wasn't in stretch, so he had the opportunity to do both. But if he was, he would have to make, he would not have a medal or be fluent in Spanish. Also, by having one school like Mosaic with more kids in each class, it would afford your customers the opportunity to have a stretch class built in with the core class. My second thing is the concession stand at the high, Melville High School. In the last two months, I've been all over Sullivan, Sekman, Park Hills, Pickneyville, for cross-country and band. And the thing that they all had in commage in common was a concession stand that could provide food for eight hours. When I worked at concession stand here, I am embarrassed to tell the parents at five-thirty in the afternoon, all we have is chips and candy or whatever, we are running out of hamburgers before halftime on Fridays. The school has the potential to make a lot of money if it's done correctly. I propose that we get a makeover for it, and we could make, hopefully, make a lot of money. We could then use the profits for, from both high schools, maybe for our sorely needed transportation area. And lastly, I would like to talk about cell phones in the classroom. I don't think kids should be able to bring them to class. I know parents would like them kept with them for safety, but I wonder if there could be a compromise with them. We could get something like a shoe holder that like goes on the back of a, like a closet? And there's those little areas, and you can just put your phones in there when you come into class and then get them on the way out. That way, they can be away from them but still have access to them in case of an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of good ideas there.
I would like to say that Berkeley's bands and orchestra and choral were amazing. Scott and I were both there, and it was really good. So thank you, all right.
Well, there were a lot of good ideas in those comments.
So we don't have closed session tonight, so if I could please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?